All right, then let's so as giddy up. I my intention with this meeting is, you know, as a work session. We need to review the packet for Monday's meeting. We need and then I have on my list three items of various new world business to discuss, which was Tony's request to discuss village staffing. The whatever's going on with our desktop this week regarding the police vehicle graphics. And we have indicated that we needed to discuss the status and future of the communications committee. And then, of course, a review of our priorities, if there's been any project progress from there. Does anybody else have any topics that they wanted to add to this agenda? I will take silence as agreement and we can get moving here. Let me just find the tab that I have. The packet up in. Please hold. Here it is. Okay, so in the packet for Monday's meeting, we have minutes from January twenty second to approve. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those? Will anybody have an issue? Ratifying or moving forward on those minutes? Nope. Okay, we have village official reports. So we will assume that the chief Delph will do a professional job with his report as he always does. I'm assuming Mike Flickinger is probably excused, but Mayor Hughes, you'll have whatever report there is necessary from him. Fiscal officer, it will be making a report.
Probably not. She's out ill. I I will give a basic report. The quick report that I'll give you guys is I we still have not been able to close out December. We still do not have the document we need to do that.
And you're waiting on it from the county or what's the document with that's the holdup?
It has to do. I'll make sure and I know we've we've said this on like four different meetings, so I should know just as well as you guys should know at this point because we've they've literally told us like five times. Diane, do you know what it is? I feel like it's the gas tax thing or something, but I think I'm wrong. Do you remember what it is? I it is from the county.
Okay. It's every year. There's something that the very, you know. February, March that they get them.
Yeah, no, I I I know it's something from the county that holds us up every time. Just don't know why.
And maybe we can get an update on when the county thinks it's gonna be. Maybe we can make a couple phone calls and I'm sure they have been, but maybe we can just get an update from that as well. Just to see if we know when we're gonna get it. But yeah, December is still not closed out, not because they can't. Well, not because they don't want to. It's because they can't.
Right. And there's just one one holdout piece. Legal counsel Jesse, I don't know if there's any ongoing that we're waiting on input from him or is it just? I don't. I I know I'm not waiting on anything from Jesse, but I don't know if anybody else is.
At this point, I don't have any intent of inviting. Anybody to that meeting. Jesse is currently out of the office as well. We have Todd that we've been using. So if anybody has a need for him to be there, let me know and I will request that one of them is there. But at this point, I he's not in this week or he's not in right now, so I don't have any intent of having him there. Be a two second quicker meeting.
Sure. Because those are usually pretty quick anyhow. Tony, how was has there been a planning and zoning meeting and do you have any report that you are intending to give for planning and zoning?
Nothing. Nothing comes out at me. I mean, we talked about green space planning again and there aren't any new ordinances that we're working on just yet.
Good. And then last Diane, you apparently are on here for the MPCA liaison. Was there any meeting or any update that you intend on giving for Monday?
Well, I don't know what's required for that. I mean, I kind of like I volunteered to be the MP. I mean, I go to the I'm going to the meeting now because I'm I'm sharing the newsletter. So if it's most convenient for me to then be considered the liaison, I guess I could do that.
I am only going off the packet that we have here where it's listing you under village official reports.
I mean, the the problem is is on Wednesdays and David from the community. As community chair wants to go, but he can't go because it's Wednesday and he works. He works on Wednesday, so he's not here to say yea or nay about it.
This is always been one of my pet peeves about our agenda is why we cover the MPCA meeting in the first place and a council meeting. I've never understood it. It's supposed to be about village business. MPCA is not village business and I would really love to see that stricken from the agenda.
Sure, you know, and I would agree with you wholeheartedly if we operated as two entirely separate entities, but we're back to sharing a newsletter. Right? So we're not two separate entities.
Wow.
Sharing a newsletter and sharing a newsletter is still two different entities.
Yeah, I mean, we still try to keep that separate, but I I, you know, the only reason I could see is if there is I mean, if if the if the FPCA we've had to get, if they want to do something crazy wackadoodle in the village. I mean, because their activity is in the village, then I guess the mayor would know and she could say she's either bringing it up for discussion or say she's approved that activity, whatever it might be, running naked around the village or whatever. That might upset other residents, you know, or some something like that. It probably would be good to be plugged in a little bit. So you could say you were aware of it, but other than, you know, for that aspect. But just for me to say, well, you know, the they're doing the the Easter egg thing now. Saying so, though, I mean, this is a recorded meeting. Maybe it would be helpful to to give the FPCA avenue to broadcast, other avenue to broadcast their activities. You know, I I don't think we should and most of the people in the village kind of assume there's some kind. I I I could go either way. I mean, I I don't know that because the activities happen in the village, I think we should probably carry a teensy bit about what exactly they're planning to do in the village as as count, but that's all that that only reason.
For me, that's a communications committee thing. If you wanted to cover, you know, the newsletter, do it in in the communications committee report.
Right. I don't think it's just about covering the newsletter, right? I think that what having this segment here is that MPCA is an entity that is operating within the confines of our village. Use village resources at the very least in the fact that, you know, their events are in our buildings at our pool. Right? And they are operating, if not as an entity of the village, right? Because they're not. They are still representing the village in many ways, and so it's good to have a pulse on what they are doing. Right? It's MPCA who in years past has gotten Minerva Park represented in the Northland Fourth of July parade. Right? It is MPCA that largely represents the village at the Northland Community Council. It is MPCA that does, like Diane said, you know, children's parties and whatnot, but they largely use community facilities to do that. So I think it's appropriate to have an awareness of what they're doing. If only because if we decide we no longer want them to use our facilities or we'd rather prioritize something else to use those facilities at that time. Having that awareness is worthwhile.
And I will just make sure that everybody's fully aware and Diane was living proof of this the other day when their outlet to call for questions is calling my administrative assistant. So as Diane was there, I got a voicemail from somebody wanting a directory. So we get phone calls in there constantly. We get mail delivered to the village for MPCA. I mean, to me, they're
They have a mailbox on the front of the community building.
Yeah, I mean, they're again, could we not say anything? Yeah, but we could also, you know, we could literally say what thirty seconds isn't going to hurt us. I I mean, I understand what Tony's saying. I mean, it doesn't, but you know. It doesn't. I'm like Diane. It doesn't hurt my feelings whether it's on there or whether it isn't on there, but to say that there's a Valentine party on Sunday at X o'clock. Doesn't doesn't hurt my feelings, but if it if it wasn't said, I wouldn't.
Who's going to be responsible for that report?
Right. And at this point, the the package says Diane. But Diane, if you don't want to be responsible for that report, then we either need to go to MPCA and ask them. Hey, we have no one to give this report. Can you provide a written thing to be read into the record? Or it won't be.
And that is what they used to do because I would. There were times in which I would just read the report.
Well.
I could definitely take that over as my wife is the current secretary of MPCA and does the meeting minutes.
There you go.
For it, I could say, hey, give me a copy of those, would you?
Yeah. So if councilperson Berger is raising his hand, if you wanted to steal those minutes into a a minute or, you know, something about a minute to give us a report. That that's beautiful. Do you think you'll have that for Monday?
The minutes are the minutes are done and I was emailed a copy of them. But I would just take a look at them. They're rather sketchy. They they don't need to be elaborate and they're not. And I'm not sure you could. I'm not sure you could make announce or report or announcement off of the minutes, but welcome to give it a try.
It's okay. I'll stay with the person writing them so I can get that extra details if I need.
He can get clarification as as necessary.
Okay.
All right, then we have that covered. Mayor's report, Mayor Hughes, any anything big and big and powerful that that we should be made aware of in advance. Okay, then moving on to committee reports. Councilperson McNamara is not in attendance, so we can't get word there. Finance, councilperson Shrim.
Actually, please stop you right there.
Yeah.
Tony, are you aware that there is a meeting Wednesday?
No.
Well, there was
Talking about.
There was a text going back and forth, and I guess I just assumed it was you guys on it. And then when I went back and looked at it. They set up a meeting and apparently it must be John because there's multiple people on here. So it must be John and the pool concession guy. So it looks like he set up a meeting with John and the concession guy, but I didn't know. So I scheduled a meeting thinking that it was a meeting. But if you guys aren't invited, then I need to remove the meeting and I text him, but his response to me was not an answer.
From David?
Yeah. So I was just curious if I I basically asked him, is this a meeting or are you just talking to John? And and he said, you're more than welcome to attend, but that wasn't. I need to know if there's going to be if it's an actual meeting of two or more members.
He hadn't sent me anything. I'm assuming he's just getting together with.
Okay, I'm going to cancel that meeting. Because I'm not going to be there either. Okay, I'm I'm just gonna cancel. I was hoping he was gonna be here because I was gonna verify. Because I don't know if Joe was invited, so and Joe's not here either, but I I'm canceling the meeting just so it's on here. So you guys are aware. Because technically, if we have a meeting scheduled and it's only him, he can't technically have his meeting.
He's allowed to meet with people.
Yes, he is, but I don't need to schedule it as a meeting because then you don't have two or more members. Go ahead.
All right, so that was a something regarding community. We were up to finance. Diane, do you? I know we talked briefly about your end not being closed out. Did you have anything else that you were reporting for the finance committee?
No, I'm hoping that we're gonna have a finance meeting anyway, even though it's not closed out, so we could look at because we still have. I'm sure the January has been completed. Should be Tuesday six. It should be just about. I mean, yeah, it should be completed or just about completed, except for not being able to be closed out. We should be able to get reporting on it.
So, right, but so but you so you don't have that ready, though. So you're waiting on information from.
I don't have that. I I don't have that to even have a report. So, you know, we don't have any of the financials for January. Or just or, you know, the end of the year, December, and it looks like Kim just said the last minute regarding salaries, et cetera, EMS positions, so.
Yeah.
Financing that's just popped up. But yeah, no, I don't really have anything else to report on finance.
Okay. Then next up is Streets from Tony. Tony, do you have any report to discuss?
I was gonna get with him because, I mean, you know, the sewer just there was progress, I mean. Not much other than that.
Right.
Is it safe to say that the storm or the sanitary sewer repairs are complete? That's safe to say?
I I I'm ninety nine point nine 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 because I believe we're doing the payout. We were waiting for another document to do the payout for the the final sanitary. So I believe the I believe the answer is yes, but let's wait till Mike sends me his report. I'm ninety nine point nine. If there is anything, it's like one sewer great in the entire village.
You know, other than, you know, waiting for weather to, you know, for it to warm up and do our pothole report would be the next thing on the on this breed agenda.
Okay. Then moving on, communications councilperson Curl isn't here, so we there's no report there and we have discussing that committee as a future agenda item. Safety is me. I think the big I I as a report would be reporting on the fact that the no parking here to curb signs are up. Beyond that, just scheduling a safety committee meeting for this month. And then legislation councilperson Bruger. Do you have a committee report or do you want to just read, get into the legislation that's on this packet?
Yeah, I mean, we have and we're gonna have a meeting on Monday before council or legislature. But, you know, we have the pool fees first reading, which I'm sure is going to be a blank document. Because it will just be or did or you guys because you guys did have a committee. So it's probably the actual fees, isn't it?
Thanks. Okay, so that is actually done. I'm just so used to some of these. We put them up there to get them started and then fill in the details later. I think Mr. Our officer still tabled correct? At least that's what's shown on the agenda or are we gonna be?
We're gonna pull it back off the table.
Okay, so we're gonna get around to confirming Officer Piney Penny. You know, we're finishing up the military leave. We're finishing up the expansion of the non-voting member, I believe, is the O two. We have a first reading of revised salary and did that change salaries or just change by taking out people?
My under she sent an entire list of it. The minimum wage went up to eight eighty, so we had to adjust the lifeguards for that. We had to maintenance.
So in in Kim's email this morning, it says it removes the EMS positions as being authorized by the village. It updates the pool workers in accordance with the new Ohio minimum wage that went in effect January one. And it adds a part-time maintenance supervisor position to oversee the maintenance worker and seasonal workers.
Some minor changes to our pay.
Well, the the part-time supervisor is a new position.
Well, again, that's going to be a discussion whether or not you guys still want to discuss that. I didn't know. They asked me what to put on there and I I just told him to bump up the pay a little bit, just in case we do decide to do it supervisor versus a second maintenance person versus whatever I decide to do with that position. I wanted to have the ability to do that because I've heard rumbles of this is what we want to do. This is what we need to do. It's going to be a larger department where, again, you know, we have, we still have the three seasonal options. You know, we don't know how many people we're going to need to maintain the green space over there. We're going to find out. We're currently, you know, in the process of looking at different lawn mowers and different things like that. We currently have a push lawn mower that's on its last leg. A residential ninety nine dollar special at Home Depot for a weed eater. And we have our now looking at what seventeen. Our lawn mower is four years old and which is in great shape. We don't have any issues, but we are currently operating an entire development on a four-year-old one lawnmower. So obviously, that's not going to cut it to do all of the things that we need to cut. So we're in the process of looking at another lawnmower, upgrading our push lawn mower and all of that kind of stuff. So the money has been budgeted, as you guys are aware, because you guys are the ones that did it. So we will be able to get those items when they come about.
And the only thing I'm I'm pointing out here is that there are actually two new positions. A maintenance super part-time and a maintenance worker part-time. Because previously we have a maintenance manager and we have a maintenance seasonal help and that's.
There used to be two part-times. We switched the part-time to a supervisor part-time.
Wait.
I don't have any. I mean, that was never mentioned in any of the finance meetings we've had with Kim where
You guys thought Brian was going to do all of this?
No, of course not. I'm saying procedurally, I'm not trying to. I'm just saying procedurally, the council needs to
That's what this is.
Prove new positions, new positions where there's a job descri it. There's a job description for a job or a maintenance supervisor. It needs to be. It's a new position. It's never been budgeted before, has no job description, needs to have a job description, needs to be provisioned by council.
Wait for a second. I think the way to the I don't have it in front of me, but we have a maintenance supervisor and two seasonal helpers. Is what the positions that I recall having, a maintenance supervisor and two seasonal people. That's what we have currently.
We had the we have. We actually had the ability to have three seasonal, which we have not done. There is also always been a full seasonal maintenance in which we have not done, but those have always been there.
The seasonal people have always been there. I totally agree. I'm not talking about.
I know you're not. I'm I'm answering Tony.
Oh, okay.
No, you are correct.
Supervisor was the position that the chip that Brian's filling right now. It's called.
The maintenance supervisor is what Brian is filling. That's fine. I I the implication was that there was going to be a a second supervisor or that Brian was maybe gonna be a manager and there was going to be a supervisor. I I'm I'm just confused.
It so is so for clarification, is our current maintenance person, is Brian currently titled as maintenance supervisor?
As you guys are fully aware, nothing was ever titled before I stepped foot in there. There was at the time.
No, I'm not aware of that. I thought.
But every every position has a job title.
A maintenance person. In my understanding, they were all maintenance because it's my also my understanding that we had at the time Jim and Brian were both part-time. Brian was not seasonal. Both of them were part-time workers at the time. Jim was there with Brian for quite a while. Maybe he was seasonal. I don't know, but he would. He was there.
Brian was seasonal.
Was. Well, he was considered seasonal, but he was not seasonal. He was there for a quite a while. Three or four months. He was there way longer than four months before Jim left.
Mayor, if I can step in since I overlap between you and the former mayor, the Brian did come on board originally as a temporary, right? So that will be a seasonal temporary. And then he did become at some point, he merged into a part-time position. Hierarchy was never. It was very fuzzy, right? Jim was kind of the senior maintenance guy and Brian was, you know, the obviously the new guy. So that was about the the extent of the hierarchy in that case.
But from a from a positions on the books perspective, right? On the books today, we don't have a position slash job title of maintenance supervisor. We are creating a maintenance supervisor position.
No, that's.
Whether whether it's.
Yeah.
Okay, I I can have her take out the word supervisor, put two maintenance people in there and we'll move on with life.
Anybody arguing with that either. Need to know what we're doing so that we can do it.
Right, we we. You just it's this this has a separate.
I was doing it based on.
It has a separate. It has a separate salary range.
Right. And I was doing this based on Tony's conversation numerous times that he believed that we needed to have a maintenance supervisor. We actually were gonna have a maintenance department, a maintenance team. I was trying to make things easier. The only line that's gonna change in the event of a job description is it's going to have one line above everything else. If you want to know how I'm gonna do the job description, I'm gonna go find the job description. And I'm going to put all of the stuff that's already on there and I'm gonna put overseas the part-time and the seasonal people. That's exactly how the job description is going to read.
Well, that's a big deal. I mean, in terms of someone's jobs responsibilities. Their own person to managing other people. That's a big deal.
Right. So but it would have one sentence. So you want to know what that would say.
Okay, I don't think it should have one sentence. I don't think that's the way to to manage people, but, you know, I mean, you want to hold them accountable for a few other things besides some vague thing that says I I I'm quote unquote managing. So but but I I, you know, it is a separate salary range. It is a title of supervisor. It has certain responsibilities. The person wants to, you want to be able to judge their performance based on on their job description so that we're not sitting here later going what's this person? What's the supervisor doing? They're not doing this. They're not doing that. I saw Joe was over here and he was messing around and that's that should. You know, the supervisor should be talking to him and and we're gonna look at the job description. Well, what is the job describe? Well, he says, well, just generally manage them. Well, what does that mean? So I I just I just think we're just, there's no reason why. There's plenty of job descriptions in the world. That it can be, you know, elaborate a little bit on what that means to supervise somebody. So that if we have this, somebody or the residents say, what what is that? What is that supervisor supposed to be doing? Aren't they supposed to be blah, blah, blah?
You guys have been the ones that have complained about our current job descriptions for a really long time. Maybe that's something that somebody in the council would like to look into because nobody likes and we've had this conversation numerous times that you guys don't like the current job description and you don't feel like it represents. One of the first things I did the first month I was there is I went to Kelvin. I went to Becky. I went to Leah and asked them to overlook their current job descriptions. And Eric, I think you and I had even talked about it to let me know what they thought of their current job description. We kind of talked about them and that was that. So in my opinion, we're talking about a part-time maintenance person. My opinion, the job description is going to be the exact same. You guys may, you may not agree with it. You clearly don't agree with it, but it's going to be that you're going to oversee the seasonal and part-time people. Other than that, the maintenance person itself is going to be doing the same thing. They're going to be cutting the grass the majority of the time. I mean, that is going to take up a majority of our maintenance person's time. So there are going to be other things that they're gonna do as you guys are fully aware, taking the trash out, making sure, but turning this, you know, again. And I can have that to you guys Monday, but that's really the only thing I'm gonna change is it's and if you guys want to adjust it. You guys are more than welcome to adjust it. This is something that, you know, way back when Becky was hired, you guys, you know, were upset because Lynn didn't have an exact job description. Here's and maybe I'll say this and you guys aren't gonna like this either, so I might as well just throw it all out there. I couldn't even tell you what Becky does. Becky does so much in that building. Writing it down on a piece of paper would take the entire day and it would be adjusted every single day.
Becky. It's already written out. There is a job description.
But it's not completely accurate. It doesn't say anything about doing plumbing reports and doing all of this type of stuff.
Shouldn't be.
So again, when you have people that are basically doing all of these different things, it it's very difficult. I mean, she's the clerk of court. She's the, I mean, Becky is literally four different job titles, but she's got two. This is. I know we're getting into that shortly.
God descriptions, quite frankly, we can pull example maintenance positions from surrounding communities because they have all borrowed from each other. And you can look at them and pick and choose what you like best because they're all going to be very applicable, you know, so.
This is exactly why I wanted to have a conversation about how we run the village and the processes. This is, you know, perfect segue into that. I'm more than positive that we have already have a position of maintenance supervisor. That's what Jim Newsy's position was titled as, and we've got seasonal helpers. Are those people we don't. What we need to do is describe is come up with a job description for the maintenance supervisor.
I'm looking to see if there is one.
Yeah, that that would be good to confirm because I I don't believe. Yeah, that that would be good to confirm because I I don't believe his, so there's two different things at play here in my opinion. Right, why, whether or not Jim Newsy was a maintenance supervisor because he was supervising the maintenance. Or he was a maintenance supervisor because that is the uh position slash job title in our. Uh employment manual are two different things. And while I agree that he, that position has always been a supervisor of the maintenance, right? They are the person who gets it done. I do not believe that the title, the job name and position in our employment manual indicated as such. I could be wrong and I'm glad that Mayor Hughes is looking it up, right? I think that all of this discussion merely. Erupted because we're trying to understand, A, what exactly we are adding. And then B, what exactly is the differentiation of duties between this maintenance supervisor? And the maintenance worker that we anticipate paying about two dollars less an hour. If if I heard everybody and can summarize it as succinctly as possible, Diane, does that sound like a fair? Uh summarization of the concerns?
Um, uh yeah, that's pretty good. I I that that's conceptually is correct and then uh especially if. I I think now i- if you're going to have a maintenance department, I think you should anticipate different uh levels and if. Uh if another quote, if you don't know what the sup- if you don't clearly say what the supervisor is doing, then. If you need to add another person, which you may, based on the workload, what are you adding and then uh. What is the, importantly for councils, what is the pay range? Because the, you know, we have a uh. Pay range in here that is, where a maintenance worker is fourteen to eighteen range and then we have the supervisor, which is sixteen to twenty range. And I don't know how random that was or if someone actually looked up some. You know, salary ranges to see what was logical, what what was uh common for. Uh this type of work or not. I really don't know. So I just, it's, I would just like to see. Uh rather than just doing this as a slow drip, which is always my complaint, is that we actually had a. A plan.
So, uh and and again, you guys are gonna take all of these wrong, but you know, we've been talking about this since October, November. Um we're now to the point we need to do the salary ranges and I need to actually hire people. Um, this isn't a surprise that we were doing this. This is basically the comeback from everything that we have been discussing for quite a while. Um that we were going to do all of these. So again, let's move on. I will have you guys the set, the the job description Monday um from the maintenance supervisor. And that should end the conversation because I'm not gonna talk in circles. The I'm, I did this with Kim. Kim and I had talked about this. And I put the word supervisor because I have heard that word come from council seventy-three times. Whether or not this is an actual, I'm gonna be able to pull this up because I'm actually trying to log on and it takes forever. Whether or not this is one we already have, great. If not, I will bring you guys one. So I I'm, I I assume that may solidify this conversation. So um either way, um to to your point, have we looked up Westerville, what they're paying their, you know, supervisor? No, this is what we, this is the range in which. We can afford it. If we, we can't obviously pay a supervisor thirty dollars an hour and then a seasonal people eleven, so or fourteen or whatever. So this is the range in which we're comfortable with, with our budget. Um, you know, if you guys wanna look into, you know, some of the other things that, you know, we're more than welcome to. But the number was pulled based on what our seasonal people make and that again was the discussion. What we're able to afford, what our seasonal people make and what our other people have done in the past um in those positions. So that's where the number came from, just to give you guys an example. But I just, I don't wanna waste your guys a Saturday morning talking about something that we've talked about, you know, having a maintenance department, having a maintenance supervisor. I can probably pull twelve meetings that I've heard the word maintenance supervisor. So Kim asked, I put it in. She asked if I wanted it as a maintenance person or a maintenance supervisor. I, again, if there is anybody, I know there's only four of you, but if there's anybody that has not heard. Those words used, please let me know because I did it based on the feedback from you guys.
Yeah, Mary Hughes, I I again, I I I don't think you're pushing back against our actual concern. I don't think anybody here has a concern with having a position, maintenance supervisor. Right, so.
You want a job description.
Right, the concern is to understand the differentiation between maintenance supervisor and maintenance worker.
Maintenance supervisor is going to supervise the maintenance. I I think we've already said that.
You have a description.
Wait, and whether or not that's what the position, and Tony, I'm not in disagreement with you, but I mean, I'm I'm gonna explain it my way. A supervisor supervises the seasonal people and the maintenance workers and. And and maybe, and and please don't take, I guess I'm surprised because I'm trying to figure out why that is. Not common knowledge, like common sense, like.
I feel, so I feel like to define a supervisor as one who supervises is a little bit circular. Right? Because then you have to define what supervise is. Right? Without defining the expectation of what that supervision entails, you you wind up with. A a a role without a definition.
Okay, and I'm gonna disagree. So to me, a supervisor is a supervisor, so.
If it it's just, uh if you, if you say that a supervisor, for example, approves somebody's timesheet, let's say. In your mind, that that's obvious, right? That's obvious. They do there, don't they? So, you know, it could be that the person that you're assuming is going to have a supervisor title. May not, might not want it after they hear what exactly you're. Anticipating that they should be doing under that title.
Yeah. Supervisor doesn't just do, our maintenance supervisor isn't just going to supervise. He's gonna be doing.
You know, that's, that's just. Yeah.
Tony, Tony, you're a hundred percent correct. That, I guess, that's my theory. That's my theory in line. That's why I'm trying to figure this out. My view is this. We don't have a position available for somebody to just sit in an office and do paperwork as a maintenance person. If we are planning on cutting tens of thousands of acres, I'm I'm exaggerating now, but we are taking over an entire new development. So when it comes to cutting grass over there, Tony, you're correct. I feel like our maintenance supervisor is going to be doing the exact same thing. Except instead of them coming to me forty-seven times, they are going to go to the maintenance supervisor. The maintenance supervisor will say, you start at Briar Rose, you start over here. That's as simple as it gets. They are not going to be making these crazy decisions. They are basically going to be the person that that this, the ma- the people report to. The seasonal people and the other person. We're not, again, I feel like we're trying to reinvent the wheel.
If I may, hold on, if I may, you just fleshed out your expectations way further than you ever had before. Because I can imagine a supervisor who only watches that people are doing the things that you've already told them to do, right? That's another way that I could supervise, right? So if you just say they will supervise. That can mean a lot of different things. So questions I might have is, is the supervisor, X, is there any expectation that they would do performance evaluation? Right? Is there any expectation that they would set the schedule? Is there any expectation that they are uh designing the the workload? Right? Or is that all coming from somewhere else? Because that is not necessarily, those are things that are not necessarily implied by the word supervisor. So you are using a word that can mean multiple things, but not defining it.
Right, and as a supervisor, gonna, if something breaks, if the lawnmower breaks or is is the supervisor then? The one that takes it to the shop is the supervisor, the one that's gonna do mechanical repair. If they're doing that, they're not mowing the lawn. Uh, you know, uh what is the expectation? Is the expectation that they will, without needing permission from the mayor? Go buy things when they need to buy them? Is there a certain dollar amount which they can't exceed if they do, if they do?
Be about seventy pages long because a supervisor, then a supervisor.
Not a seventy-page line. It's just the important items, the important items that you.
You guys have both listed ten different things. In my opinion, a supervisor oversees a department. Barry, you oversee what goes on in a department. So again, I I'm, I will bring you guys the information on Monday. If you don't like it, you guys are more than welcome to tweak it. We can also put this back to just a basic person and then they can report.
You don't want to do that. You need a supervisor. I would totally agree.
Then I will bring you the the sheet and I will make, I I'm hearing everything you're saying, but you, you know. Again, we've been talking about this for twenty minutes. Eric has also said we will get one. You know, I don't do.
We want, we want, we wanna know. We just, uh, well, anyway, if you, if you would like to, i- if you would like us to. Fine, give us something and we'll give you feedback on that and uh I don't, yeah.
I will make it more elaborate to please everybody. Like, I hear you. So I will make it more elaborate to what you guys are looking for. Like, in my world, I don't believe it needs, like, a- again, I give people too much credit. Maybe you guys, maybe I'll say it that way. I give people way too much credit to believe that hiring in a maintenance supervisor and it's gonna pay X amount of money, they're going to know exactly what it entails. We will have conversations. We will do all of that. I understand you guys like things in writing and this is the same battle Lynn dealt with. Again, I I don't wanna bring that up, but when we hired Becky, uh it, this was the exact same conversation. So. I also didn't like that conversation. I will bring you on Monday. I just didn't, you know, I just didn't think this was going to turn into all of this. Um, because like Tony's saying, you know, whether or not we already technically have that position or don't have that position. I I'm answering things that I don't even know that we don't already have. So I'm telling you, in my world, a supervisor supervises a position. I I I don't. I, again, I give people way too much credit. I don't feel like I need to be elaborate like I.
That's.
But you guys clearly do.
Way of looking at it, Mayor, I have to say. Is it really, yeah, this is exactly why the village is in dysfunction.
And it could be. Right, so we will spell it out. And I've already said that like three times. So again, I mean, I I don't have a problem. And if you guys want it adjusted, we can adjust it.
This is also a first reading, so if we do have that information, right, it gives us plenty of time between now and. What, that gives us basically a a full month to review whatever information the mayor approves or provides to us. Uh make any suggested changes we may have or offer any suggestions we may have. And we have, what is this? This is basically until the the first meeting in March. Uh would be our our final reading. So there's plenty of time. That brings us to the end of the Monday meeting packet. Uh, so the other items that I had on the agenda for council to discuss. Uh is village staffing, which we just had ourselves a twenty-minute conversation. Um, huh, on one, right? Which, which implies to me, go ahead, Mark.
Uh, yeah, I was not quite done with legislation yet.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Because, of course, we are having a legislation meeting on Monday before council. And one of the things that I wanna talk, that will be discussed on that one that we perhaps should or shouldn't talk about today is. I have drafted a new legislative proposal that uh does two things. One, and Tony, you'll like this, it fixes our description of the flag and code. If you look at the description of our flag and our codes and ordinances, it's not a description of the flag we currently use. So it changes that to match what our flag actually looks like. Um, and then.
I'm sorry, what does that mean?
In in our code, we have a description of the official Minerva Park flag that.
Yeah.
Thirty years, I, over thirty years, I didn't know we had a flag. We have a flag.
Community building. It looks like that. However, the description of it in the code and ordinances does not match the actual flag that we have now. It was adopted in nineteen eighty-four as the official Minerva Park flag and the lettering and coloration is not what we currently use. Um, so it fixes that. As I said, Tony, I know you like it when the code reflects what we actually do. Um, and then it also proposes that any major change to any logos or signage. By the village goes through a citizens review board. That I set up to be with uh. I think the wording I put in it is no fewer than five, no, no fewer than three, no more than five community members. Plus the mayor and the relevant committee chair. So it was like a pool logo, it would be the community chair. A police logo would be the safety chair, et cetera.
You know, my first, you know, thing on that is to have that, that part taken out of the flag code. And it needs a whole separate section, you know, and and it needs more description about. Uh, the advisory board and, you know, I know it describes who's on it, but, you know, it's. Creating a whole new committee. So that should be a whole separate, whole separate item, you know. Part of the code, not part of, it should be part of the code or the flag code.
Okay, yeah, I think, so I was just, uh, the reason I slid it there is looking over it, it was the only place I could see where it makes sense. But we could just put it, give it its its own number, it'd be two hundred point oh four, I believe, then. If we kept it in that two hundred section.
Yeah, it would be in the two hundreds section. I would agree with that, but it ought to be.
We can.
You know, two hundred point oh one C, we can just make it two hundred point oh four. I don't, I don't see any problem with that.
Yeah.
Well, my other thing is I think it's the most ridiculous thing in the world to be coming up with an advisory board. You know, to make these changes. Well, I know it doesn't, you know.
If it is.
Be involved in things like that, but.
If it is a uh a symbol that is to represent the community, I think it's reasonable. To engage the community in the approval of that symbol, right? Does it represent, does the, does the flag of the village represent the community? Yeah, does the logo for any, any logoing or branding for village facilities or activities represent the community? Yeah, right? So I I don't think it's unreasonable. I think it might be unwieldy, right? To have to stand up a committee, uh an ad hoc committee to review and approve. Changes to some kind of branding, but I don't think it's unreasonable.
So is MPCA gonna go through that? So you can't control what MPCA does with their logos, but yet they're also in the village. So they can come up with some sort of logo and you're not gonna micromanage that. So this started, um I'm I'm gonna put my two cents in here. And I'm gonna say this is a smack in my face. I also am with Tony. I do not agree with us. I think trying to change letterhead anytime there's a new council member. To bring in an ad hoc committee is gonna be pretty interesting because our our letterhead has names on it. So if I were gonna modify that and remove a name and put a new name, I would think that that would still need to go through because it says any modification. So modifying that would need to go through that. So all I'm gonna say is this started out because we started talking about the police logo. I explained to you guys that, you know. And and first off, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that this was my doing, not the chief, not the police department. I brought it to their attention how much I hate the yellow. That would have been January, February, I asked where it came from of last year. We had talked about it off and on, as everybody is aware, because I wanna say this for a public record as to why we're actually having a Monday night meeting, because I won't be there Monday night more than likely. Um, because again, I just feel like you're doing this because of, I I feel like it's an attack on me and we're just gonna say this. I've done nothing to deserve it. I, the money has been budgeted and this is the police department. I do not micromanage everything that they do. I am involved. I do not need to sign off on this. This is something you guys have already budgeted. So, or is already in the police budget. This is not something that the mayor has to sign off on. And as far as I'm concerned, if they go ahead and do it Monday morning, they're more than welcome to do it Monday morning and go ahead and decide what they wanna do. Um, this has never been decided by Lynn. This has never been decided by anybody. I do not have an issue with you guys doing this, but the reason you're doing it and the reason that you're doing it now is because you think I'm going to make a bad decision. I've done nothing to deserve it. You guys saw one out of ten. Which the other ones that we have been looking at have just been switching the police into blue. We have been looking at blue, silver, white, as you saw, the main colors in all of them. Nobody. You guys sent your issues and problems and I looked at those immediately and we discussed that downstairs. Simple as that. We never moved forward on that particular design. We never did anything. So I heard you, you know, when it comes to stuff like that. In whatever year it was. When they did the last ones, there was a Facebook post and I actually did try to go find it. That residents were upset because we spent money on it, because they didn't like the colors, because of all those different things. And they also were not aware that it was going to happen. So I put in the villager or in in the village newspaper that we're getting a new look. It said it was being tweaked. I can actually go right there and read it to you. It did not say it had been finalized. It did not say anything. You guys have met me. You guys have dealt with me. I have given you guys absolutely no reason to believe that I would have gone forward. Or I would have allowed them to do something that you, I knew you guys were not in support of. So I I'm not gonna go in circles. I feel like if. So I, I'm not going to go in circles. I feel like if council decides to do this, great, but I also want to let you know that if they move forward before you guys do this legislation, great, at least it'll be on the books for the next time. So if you really want, are trying to stop me, you're not stopping me. It's already budgeted. I don't sign off on it. I just ask them to look into it. This, I, I'm, I'm, we'll end it right there because I don't want to waste your guys' minutes on this, but I, go ahead, Tony.
Well, Mayor, you just got finished saying that you're the one that's initiated this. Okay, here's, this is my problem with this, and I think Mark, you know, uh, you know, said something to this effect is why, why are we changing, spending money to change it? Just like what was said before, when, when they changed their police cars. To me, there's nothing wrong with the way they look right now. And to spend money on changing the police car because you don't like yellow isn't a really good idea.
And that's fine. I, I've asked for it for over a year. They've been there. When we get the new cars, that's when we typically do it. And again, it, it, it's something that we've discussed for a long time.
I'd like to, yeah, so I'd like to address a couple of things. One is, Mayor Hughes, you had indicated, or you said there was a Facebook post the last time that the police cruisers were re, rebranded, that people complained that they didn't know, that they weren't involved.
But they just didn't know.
Uh, I, I think when you just went through it, you said not involved, but we'd have to go back and look at the videotape. But I'd imagine that the involvement is also part of it. People like to be involved in these kinds of changes.
So you think inviting three people to be on a committee is involving the residents?
I'm sure. It's a hell of a lot more than not inviting anybody. And you would put it, you would put it in for an open, we intend to rebrand this, who would like to be involved? Right? Now, I, I, that, that is merely my thoughts on what has been proposed. My follow-up is you said there were multiple designs. Are the, the ten images that you sent us the totality of the designs?
Again, we started asking for different designs from those designs.
I, I, okay, I don't know what that means. I'm sorry, because you sent us ten pictures.
Okay.
Of, of ten different concepts.
So if we didn't like, okay, so let's say we love, okay, so on that, on the first one. If we didn't love where that was gray, we could have put blue there and gray at the bottom. We could put silver here, so we could take those designs and do pick and choose. We can do a different color. So let's say one, like, one of them was more of a teal color, not a teal color, but it was an ugly blue. So we were looking at a different color blue, trying not to go to Mifflin, you know, matching Mifflin Township, London Township, you know, trying to keep, you know, all of that. Um, and yes, there are going to be people that are going to be mad because we changed it, but the moral of the story is this does, how yellow, the Pittsburgh Steelers and yellow has any, there, you know, any.
Yeah, that, that anecdote that you keep on telling a, has meaning to such a small group of people.
Exactly, and that's fine.
That it doesn't, that it, that it really bears no relevance. I don't think, you know, I don't think anybody but you and whoever else was in the room when you heard that story ever looks at our cruisers and thinks, oh, look, we, we love the Pittsburgh Steelers here. It's just not what's going on.
Well, that's fine, but all my point is, is it's been an ongoing discussion as to why we have yellow and, and that was that.
About why we have yellow, except for you, with Mayor.
Because I've gotten the story from the people that were there.
But it's also safety yellow, which is why we paint school buses that color, which is easy to see. And you can see that car and say, oh, that's a police vehicle. I can identify it from far away because it has large, bright lettering on it. Um, I, I will say, and, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, you know, thrilled that I had to come up with this legislation, but you know, to a certain extent, from my point, uh, it was two and a half weeks ago that I heard about this rebranding. Um, when I first saw the first design you shared with us, I expressed my, uh, problems and reservations with it. And then I didn't hear back anything from you until it was in the newsletter.
And all, all I guess I'm gonna say is.
I did. I gave my opinion and then I got silenced. I didn't see ten other designs until this happened.
Right, but.
Question I want to ask, just so I can get it out there, how much is it going to cost per vehicle to change the?
We, we have budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars to do all three.
Okay, so.
Because we don't have to pay for the fourth if we do it at the right timing. So no, we're not talking tens of thousands of dollars. We're talking.
Questions I had.
And Mark, this is all I'm going to say. This is actually. I would say this has probably been the biggest smack in the face that you guys have done. I have done nothing to deserve this. And this was, this was a push directly to me. You could have come to me. You could have had a conversation with me. So you guys may take this wrong, but this has been, this is hurtful. I'm sorry. This was very hurtful for you to bring this in without just asking me. I have done nothing. I have brought you guys so much information. I continue to give you guys information above and beyond. We could have redone this. And, and again, I'm not going to disagree with your legislation completely. We could have done this without saying one word to you guys. We really could have. That's not how I operate. And for you to take this forward was the smack in the face because you guys know how I've operated. You guys have been around for over a year and I don't operate that way. So for when you did that, it was just, it was, it took me by surprise. It really took me by surprise, Mark, because I thought you thought better of me. And I'm going to move on. So you guys have your meeting Monday. I will not be there. I'm not in disagreement because, I mean, you guys can do whatever with the legislation because honestly, the mayor doesn't sign off on it. I don't do anything with it. I don't do anything with the logo. I don't do anything with any of that stuff. So there is nothing in writing. There is nothing. But your timing on this is just a smack in my face and I didn't deserve it. And that's all I have to say.
All right, well, that was not my intention, um. The, the, the timing of it is, uh, because I've only known about this for two and a half weeks.
There's a lot, I will also say this with COVID and, and this will be, I'm not going to apologize, that I'm not going to do because we've discussed it. There's a lot that goes on in that building, but when you guys are not in that building because you guys don't stop in because of COVID, because of all of that, there's a lot of stuff you guys have no idea. We don't clear a lot of things when, you do learn a lot more when you're in there, but when we are doing, it, it is very difficult when you're on an hour to two hour meeting twice a month. There's no other interaction with you, with Brian, with, you know, whatever. This has been very difficult for me to tell you every single thing that goes on the fourteen days between some of these meetings. I mean, I could literally sit here and tell you seventy-two different things, but honestly, I'm not going to. I mean, I, I, I could tell you things that happen every single day, all day long, and there's only so much I can tell you all the time. I don't believe that this is that big of a deal. It's a very small amount of money. It's something that it's, to me, it's not been that big of a surprise. Um, we've had these, like Tony said, we can continue with the yellow. Every single year, we do actually pay for one, which people don't really necessarily realize because every year we get a new car. Um, this is just transferring them all to a different one and then we move forward with that one for several years. Simple as that.
I'm, I'm just going to go back to my actual point behind this res, like, legislation is if we're going to have, and we, we do, obviously, we're not just having unmarked police cars. But if we're going to put some sort of stylized artistic statement on the side of them, the community should have a chance to, to weigh in on it. That's, that's really all this legislation is saying.
And for the record, one of the conversations we had was once we got the top two, we were going to post it on Facebook and let residents vote about it. So again, I just wish you would have come to me. I really would have come to me because there was a bigger conversation about it.
I didn't run out to the Facebook page and.
And you didn't, and I appreciate that. I, I really do appreciate that, Mark.
Did just come to you, that, that, I mean.
No, you came to me with the last sentence that you're going to stop me by using legislation.
To, I will. Because I also didn't want to spring that on you.
I, I, I'm sorry you feel like this is a personal attack. I don't believe this is a personal attack. I think that we have a, uh, you know, we have a situation where we see an opportunity to allow for additional citizen input into our processes. Right? And I use the word process very deliberately because in your emails with us, you said there is a process and we're going to follow the process. I can assure you, I know nothing of the process you are using to do this. So if there's a process that I am unaware of, then I feel like that's a problem. And this is a legislation that would set forth.
Processes, they, they don't need, they, we, we're doing the process. We get graphic designs, we review them, they, they review them, they look at them, they can vote, they can do whatever they want to do. So there's.
The police, she's saying that the police do this independently. Yeah, so, so I think, um, I, I will tell you that, you know, since we're talking about feelings, uh, when you say that they can do this no matter what. Yep, sure. My feeling is that, my feeling particularly because the designs that I have seen thus far all make use of a symbol that has been co-opted by white supremacist groups. I am strongly concerned about getting that anywhere near our village, uh, at all, right? So if that's, that is the, what, what'd you say?
And, and I got that information from you guys from day one.
So, so, but, but what I, so I've only seen the, you know, the handful of designs that you say are the basis of everything that we're working toward, and all of them are using that symbolism. They are all variations of the thin blue line flag. All of them. They are all a field of, no, they're all a field of stars with stripes, one of them being blue. Right? I don't care how you cook them up, they are all ver, ver, ver.
I'm not getting into that part of it. Again, uh, you guys have known me, you guys have done all of that. I would have involved you guys. I was planning on involving you guys. At this point, I, I've, I've told the department to do what they want to do to move for, if they want to move forward, they're more than welcome to. If they do it, they do it. It's not anything I've ever had to approve. If you guys get legislation to stop them, you know, I, I'm not, like, this isn't a battle between them and, you know, all of this kind of stuff. It, it's really not.
All right, well, I, I'm letting you know that you keep referencing a process that was not laid clear to any of us.
They get the designs, the police department will review them, they will pick which one and they will get it ordered. That's the process.
And, and what you've just laid out shows the risk in that process. Because they could create, create a badging for our vehicle that the council finds offensive. And what we are suggesting is that that is not something that we should allow because that's the process currently. And this is legislation that is being proffered to avoid that.
And you're also talking about, and, and again, adding in the letterhead and doing all of that kind of stuff. And just, I'm just making you guys aware that when you change a name on letterhead, that, that is, is, is going to take a process.
I believe, I believe if the language is substantive change, right, that's not a substantive change to change one council person's name to another council person's name, because from a village perspective, they're just council people.
Again, so I, 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 I'm, I'm done. So you guys move forward, do whatever you guys want to do.
Can I just say that I'm, I'm in favor of coming up with some kind of a process to oversee the changing of symbols, because I wasn't crazy about this, the police, you know, uh, design that Chief Music came up with, with MPPD. You know, I didn't like that.
No, it needs to say.
My, my objections to this is to, is to create a board to do this. I believe there's other ways that we can get the, the community involved without creating a advisory board.
Okay, so what, what are your other ways? I mean, I.
Okay, are we going to have a legislative committee meeting right now?
Wait, I have that for legislative committee. I think we, we have aired these concerns enough for today. We have another meeting planned for Monday to deep dive into the proposed legislation. We can retool that proposed legislation. We can drop that proposed.
This, this was, bring some ideas on Monday, Tony. This was just my first.
I can appreciate. I think that was a great first draft.
Mon, Monday, Monday, six o'clock. That's when that is planned for. Uh, next up, we, uh, so that, uh, so we actually got way late into that when we were about to start a conversation regarding, uh, village staffing. Uh, and since we just had a twenty minute long conversation about that, I feel like that is a pretty large conversation that we probably need some structure around. Uh, I feel like that is its own Monday night work session that we can lay out, uh, and probably more than one, to be honest. Right? Because we probably need to start by mapping out what we currently have. And then discussing, you know, what we want as a future state and talking about how we get there. Does that sound fair to people?
Yeah, because it's definitely a meeting.
Yeah, so why don't we, um, look to use, uh, February the fifteenth, right? Uh, we can have a Monday night work session, February the fifteenth, to, to start that discussion.
And I just, uh, uh, again, I'm gonna bring you guys a couple little points to this. I, I, I don't, I know you guys, some of the conversations that you guys want to have, but I, I'm out of time. So, I mean, there is going to be a code enforcement officer hired as soon as possible. Um, I can't go any longer without one. We are, you know, going to be pushed in mid-February. I am, I have interviewed two. I'm not going to go in detail. Um, that seems to get me in trouble, so I'm, I'm not going to go. I'm, I've interviewed two. I will be making a decision. So there's going to be a couple of things that, um, you guys may want to change that you guys may not have the ability to change. I told you guys, you know, I, I sent the email out a couple of days ago, or actually a week or so ago, um, to have this conversation because I can't wait any longer. I mean, I, we're getting into a lot of permits. Eric will vouch for that, so I don't have any more time. So I know that that's the conversation you guys are going to try to have, but we're, I'm, I'm out of time.
We're going to have to take some more time.
Okay, you guys don't get the complaints. You don't want to hear that, Tony, but I can't go any longer without a code enforcement officer. We are coming to prime season. When it starts, I don't have the ability to start training somebody forty-five days from now.
All right, so Tiffany, um, if I may, what I had, in the, what I said was.
I know what you said, but I know what they're trying.
The way that I laid out this conversation was that we will start where we are, where we want, and map out how we are going to get there.
Perfect.
Right? That's, that's my intention of how to operate and work through this, right? Because of course, you need to run a village today, right? I don't disagree, and I don't think anybody here disagrees that you have to run a village today, and you can only do that with the positions and the jobs that are currently in our employment.
Can you add on there in case I'm not there? Because I do have a couple of things that's going to be on. Um, I would like for council to get their own clerk of counsel.
Sure. Yeah, it is in my notes, right? So of course you need to run the village today. And you run the village today based on the employment manual that we currently have. What we as a council can do is look to see how we can make that better, right? That's the ask that's been brought up by Councilperson Benedetti. That's the ask that I intend for us to move forward on. It is not a, it is not a, you know, stop everything until it's perfect. Because I can assure you, I am the last person who believes that, you know, let's sacrifice good enough for the, for the future promise of perfect, right? What we have right now is good enough for right now, but we are going to take some time to see if we can make it better. Okay, now, uh, the last thing as a discussion point on my agenda uh, is the communications committee, which has come up more than once. Uh, to my review of the calendar, the communications committee hasn't met since September. And unfortunately, the chair of the communications committee isn't here to speak for themselves, but they have been, I am on that committee and they have been suggesting that they will schedule a meeting for the last three months, uh, and none of that has happened. I feel like we have a committee that is not even certain what is within its purview. And as such, nothing, nothing is going on. So I know, um, my question is, do we want to reconfigure this committee? Do we want to redefine this committee? Do we want to do away with this committee and come up with something else?
I'm not sure. They all seem like reasonable directions. I'm sorry I ever brought it up, to be honest. I mean, I think we need to address the, the issue of communication, but how we go about that is.
So here, I, I will, I will go first, right? I do believe that communication has long been a issue within the village, right? People, our residents, our number one feedback for as long as I've lived in this village is that people would like more and better communication. Which is why a communications committee was created, right? Which is why a Communications Committee was created, right? It was always my understanding that the Communications Committee was at least originally intended to be a temporary thing to ensure that there were the tools available to do effective communication. Make certain a temporary committee that was to guide the creation of a better website, to allow information to get out there. Right, to allow for, you know, to create the systems to do maybe mass email, excuse me, mass emailing or bulk text messaging, or to create those systems and processes for communication, and then hand those off to the people who should be doing the communicate. Right? That is, that is how I have perceived, uh, the Communications Committee. I have heard other people, uh, talk about it as the Communications Department, where they, the Communications Committee would be drafting the message and disseminating the message. Those are two very different things, and both, neither of them are wrong. But I think we need to come to a firm decision of how we are defining this, lay that out, uh, and then decide whether or not in its current formation, right, with its current members, uh, it can be effective in that new definition or reassign committee members. And I would love to hear other people's thoughts on that. I am gonna put my video off so that I can eat my breakfast.
I just wanted to say that I I wrote the, I wrote the description for the Communication Committee. And, uh, you know, any committee can be temporary. I mean, every year it's up to council to decide on on how many, if any committees. They don't have to have even six, but it's. But anyway, uh, to, the Communication Committee um, certainly was not meant to be a board or a a department or anything else like that. But I I think that's just big, big city talking, rather than small village talking. So, uh, but the, um, I I have to go back. I I would just, uh, need a, a little bit, maybe, uh, this can, this can, uh, I don't know if I can find it fast enough, what the original, uh, proposal was for the Communication Committee. But it was things like, you know, uh, updating, uh, or, um, proposing updates to the website and different things like that, um, to to approve and and, uh, and as you say, it, it, uh, I had no idea when I did that, that we would have such controversy and conflict and an inability to choose, choose one of the many things that we could do for communications. And and it's so bogged down. It 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 obviously is, is, uh, there's a stalemate on on who we should be doing, and how should we, we should be doing it. And so I I I am fine with, personally, I'm fine if we just, uh, scrap it, uh, scrap the committee altogether, or if we pick something that was on the list of things that would, our wish list of communications and and work on just one thing, if we could agree on that. But, um, under its current form, the committee is dysfunctional, not working, not going to, not going to work, so, um.
Right, so, uh, and again, it's difficult because the Chair of the Committee is not present. But I think that is indicative, uh, as the Chair of that Committee, I don't believe, has made a Saturday morning work session in quite some time.
Right.
Right, um, you know, the, uh, when you say the form of it, uh, I, I am hearing that the members of that committee need to change to make it effective.
That's what I.
That would be one thing that if if they had a different Chair, and that the Chair was, uh, you know, I I think if that had a Chair that was willing to look, here's all the different kinds of challenges we have for communications, let's pick one thing, and let's work on that for a while. I think, and we had that driver, if we had a driver, then I think that, uh, the committee could actually do some good.
Uh, I, I don't disagree. Uh, so that, that then begs a follow-up question, right? Uh, do we want to look at all committee assignments? Or do we want to, you know, I, my, my sense is that if we were to just change the Communications Committee, uh, there would be, um, rough feelings, right? That that would be, uh, again, you know, we've had conversations about people feeling attacked. Uh, I for sure feel like that would be perceived as an attack. And we certainly shouldn't aim to do that any more than we need to. So do we want to put this in a conversation of all of the committee assignments? Or, um, yes, Mayor Hughes?
I am actually, and I mean, this is not something I was gonna bring up only because of the, you know, I I don't want any, a- again, I don't want anybody to feel like I was going to rearrange. But because of this situation, I was hoping that we would be redoing all of the committee assignments. I'm just gonna be honest with you. Um, I don't necessarily think just changing one up because I, there, there's a couple other little things that I would like to see changed. But you guys know I'm not just gonna throw you into something. I mean, I would, I would be interested in reviewing all of them and not due to any of the current, you know, if you already have a meeting scheduled and that's the, you know, I want you guys to continue. I invite everybody to all of the meetings, um, all of the committees. So, I mean, I hope everybody stays, um, proactive in all of the committees, to be honest. And and, you know, I don't, I don't want the Chair just to feel like that that's their chair and that's the only thing that they should be worrying about. But I would be interested in changing up most all of them. To be honest.
Now, to that end, I thought I recalled, but it wasn't while I was on, it happened after I was on council previously. But I believe council changed the council rules.
Exactly.
Uh, so that council s- assigns those, uh, is supposed to be assigning those chairs on their own, or those committee assignments on our own. Is that, Diane, I think that that came about in the next council, and I think you were the president for that.
I don't remember that.
I I think that, I think the actual wording in the rules of council, uh, were more gen- were more gen- they said council, uh, they either said the council with the agreement or some language with the agreement of the mayor or the mayor and council together. But it it had more of a, it was more, it wasn't one or the other, it was more of a collaboration. Yeah.
Yeah, and I I'm in total agreeance with that. Like, I don't feel like it needs to be just, but I do, I think we said this two or three weeks ago, whatever it was, um, that I really didn't have any interest in changing it up. And no, because, and honestly, it was because a couple people had reached out and said that they didn't want to change. Um, so, that was fine. Um, but in my opinion, the Communication Committee should be, um, one of the most important committees. Um, it's, and and don't take that wrong, or don't take that, because obviously finance is super important and safety and legis- everything's important. Um, but the biggest complaint, as everybody's fully aware, has been our communications, hence the, you know, the newsletter. Um, the interesting part to that is the only place that we have actually talked about the K nine, um, other than these, you know, a couple of these meetings, which, you know, I don't know how many people are actually watching two hours of a meeting, so I'm gonna assume it was the newsletter. Um, I have actually had several people reach out to me how excited they are about the K nine. So my guess is they're getting it from our newsletter, which is, you know, a dif- one of our forms of communication. I I, that to me needs to be something that is looked into and, you know, figuring out exactly other forms of communication. Because we know that the newsletter is one of our most important. But I would love to see, as you guys know, the email tech, there's so much in communication I feel like you can do, and I think it's such a broad that that's the issue, and nobody really wants to tackle certain things. Um, but communication in itself has always been a difficult part, and Brian, I'll take this from you. You can communicate as much as you want. If you're not willing to look in the window, they're not gonna get it. So you say it better than I do. Um, but I do believe that as well. I I think, you know, at some point, you have to take a little responsibility on your own. Um, but I do think that there's possibly some options. Um, so starting this committee, you know, who I I don't, I think it was Diane's idea, it was great. Um, but we're failing. So having a committee that we haven't addressed, which we are addressing, um, I'm thankful for the fact that you guys are looking into it, but switching some things around, I think, would be great. I think that there's, you know, there's some people that might be better suited in different areas. Um, and again, we can redo it again next year. I'm not interested in throwing somebody somewhere, but I'm interested in you guys saying if there's a committee that you guys would rather go to, because I do think that there's some room for some adjustments.
Okay, uh, so then that brings us to, how do we want to go about this? Uh, my first thought, and it's probably crazy, is, uh, to ask among, among this group, uh, for nominations, right? I shouldn't, I don't think that I should say, I want to chair this. I think it would be an interesting exercise for us to, uh, look amongst our peers and say, I see the qualities in Tony that I think he would be an exceptional communications Chair. Right? So I would nominate Tony to be the communications Chair. Well, no, I I, I'm just, again, just, that that is merely an example, because that's not where I'd put Tony at all, but. Well, yes, you have your ideas, and that's great. But it's a, and I, I would include you in in a nominating process, right? And then we could pair those nominations up with actual committee chairs. And then I honestly feel like, you know, one, one Chair per person. And then I, I am of the opinion that the Chair should fill the committee as they see fit. Right? Because, um, you know, assigning people at random, uh, may, you know, not, maybe not quite random, but, uh, a committee Chair should have the opportunity to build their committee as they see fit. And then, uh, because anything that the committee discusses and agrees has to come to a full council anyways for approval. Right? So it's not like we're actually giving power to anybody. We are merely giving people the opportunity to, in a small session, work on things that need done. So that's how I, and this was just my crazy idea that I came up while I was talking, because that's what I do. But if you like that idea, I can draft an email, send it out to, uh, you know, and I would say our peers. So this would go out to the six members of council and Mayor Hughes, and everybody can make their, uh, nominations. And we can try to piece it together from there, either it works or it doesn't. Or someone else is free to make their own suggestion on how to do this.
Seems like a good start.
Okay, well then, uh, you know, sometime this weekend, look to, and you look for an email. Uh, I'll request those nominations, uh, by that Monday count, the next, the fifteenth work session, and, uh, have it put together by then. Right? And then, so we would have committee chairs, and then committee chairs can reach out to other council people, uh, to staff their committee um, as they see fit. Yes.
Can, this is just a random question. So, Brian, and and this is just for me to know. So if, hypothetical, you were on, you were the Chair of Communications. You could reach out to Di- you could reach out to Diane and Tony, they're the first two up there. Um, they're on your committee. Now, can Tony be on four committees? Or do you want them to stick to just their two? So like, if you reach out to Mark and say, Mark, I want you on mine?
If, I would, I would be of the opinion that a committee should be no less than three, but can have as many as you want. If, if, if I feel like it's worth the time for my Communications Committee to seat the full council, I can ask them. They all have the right to say no, right?
Just hearing her point, her point is currently people always.
Sit on three count, three committees.
Yeah.
You know, could, could someone be on all the committees? Is that what you're? I don't, I don't see a problem with that either.
Okay, and again, just for clarification, like, if you have no interest in finance, you don't have to do that one, but you could do all of the other ones if you were, if they wanted you on there.
Honestly, I wouldn't, you know, so I, I also feel like this is an opportunity for people to look at their own capacity and decide what they can and can't do. I don't know that it's necessary for each committee to be chaired by a different person. I also don't know that it's necessary for people to be on any committees, right? I mean, let's, let's face it, if you have committees that haven't met in five months, maybe, maybe the, you know, m- maybe there's more questions to be answered in there that we can flesh out in this process.
Beautiful.
Well, I I kind of, when you said maybe people are on no committees, it makes me think of what's the drama that's just been going on in in our federal government with someone being stripped of all their committees and now having a lot of free time to, to, so, you know, spew their point of view to the rest of the world. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure we really wanna have. If you're, if you're gonna be on council, then there should be some responsibility associated with that. Really should be, and I realize that, that not everybody had, everybody has a varying amount of time to spend on these things, but.
Sure.
Um, you'd like to, you would like to hope that, you know, furthering the village, you know, wanting to be part of, you know, helping further advance the village in various areas would be something that that would be a responsibility of council that, um.
Yeah, and we, I I know exactly what you're saying, and I'm, I was merely pointing out that we can be as flexible as we feel we need to be, to be as successful as we need to be.
It sounds like, you know, the rules, uh, the rules about the one and three and all that. I mean, they're there to, to bring a discipline to the proceedings. And someone, not maybe not biting off, being so enthusiastic that they're biting off more than they can chew, and then they end up holding up, uh, the actual proceedings of a committee because they're, because their, their desires, uh, outstrip their ability to to do that. So, so I get that, but I get what you're saying too. I mean, I think it's, uh, I I think it's a great idea to you have enthusiasm about, and to not have the rules in place necessarily. But I I under- I mean, again, I understand the purpose of the rules, so I'm I'm kind of ambivalent at this point too.
To propose it another way, right? In in what I am imagining, one could not be a Chair of any committees, but be a member of four or five, right? Because maybe somebody's, uh, skill set or talent isn't in running meetings and scheduling things. Right? And there's no shame in that, right? If your skill set is getting things done, uh, but not managing a meeting, I I am not going to disapprove or be disappointed that you are still contributing, but just not in charge. There's nothing wrong with that. Yeah, so, okay, so to move this forward, what I will do today or tomorrow is get an email out to the six members of council and Mayor Hughes, explaining what we are attempting to do. Uh, and, uh, what the ask is, and that is for each individual to nominate whomever, right, without any constraints, you know, other than only council people can be Chairs of Council Committees, uh, right, to nominate whomever for whatever of the existing committees they feel should be Chair of. And I'll give a deadline of, uh, let me look at a calendar really quickly. I'm gonna give a deadline of Thursday, the eleventh, to give me some time to do some tabulation. And part of that work session that's been scheduled for the fifteen will be a small slice to discuss this and get it hammered out.
And you're gonna write down these rules, right?
Yeah, 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 I'll.
Provide the rules.
I'll, I'll do my best. We're, we're kind of making stuff up as, as we go along, so I'll do my best. We can also hammer all that out if there needs additional clarification. Uh, but that was the last of the discussion topics I had for this work session. Uh, I did wanna go back and just, uh, highlight the priorities that we came up with previously, which was, uh, the new community building, uh, process. Is there any, has there been any forward progress last, I thought we were waiting on something from Gorman Miller. Have we received that something? And I think it was like a, a basic design, or there was, that was the next thing, the last time we discussed it, we were waiting on something from them.
So just the very basic minimum, we met with them last. I don't know, last couple days ago. Um, they brought us some designs, we went over them, we've narrowed it down. We asked a bunch of questions, they asked us a bunch of questions, they took those back, and we should have some design, we should have some tweaks to those, um, probably within the next two weeks.
Uh, lakes remediation, uh, did we have, I know, unfortunately, Councilperson McNamara is not here to. to discuss whatever the community committee had done, but I think they had a meeting regarding this. Was there any update or progress on Lakes remediation?
I wouldn't say that we have anything, anything new to add to that conversation, except for, you know, trying to figure out where to get the muck at.
Sure, and then the next one was maintenance, and I think we had a robust conversation already today regarding the status of maintenance, so we'll move along. Uh, and village staffing was the last one, and we have scheduled our, for progress, we have scheduled a work setting session on the fifteenth to have that, uh, have that discussion. So that's where we are at. Um, unless anybody has anything else they wanted to bring up as new or old business, this is a speak now or hold your peace. Going once, going twice. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, Tony. Uh, a quick, cause I just wanna wrap my head, I don't quite understand some things here, um, on the, on the building. And I'm, I'm circling back because people were talking, I didn't wanna interrupt. So with, with the basic designs, so if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, Tiffany, they, they've submitted a few basic designs and these have been re, reviewed and gone over and this and that, is that something, and maybe it's, the answer is just no, is that something council's gonna be asked to weigh in on at any point? Or is that just gonna be handled by, by?
It will be, it will be brought to council, um. There were just some that we didn't like the flow, they didn't work, they didn't, they would have been too expensive. Um, so bringing designs that were not gonna, that, you know, that were.
Oh, yeah, we don't need our time.
Didn't, yeah, that either didn't work, didn't, you know, we, to bring you guys six designs when six people are already working on it and, you know, administration doesn't even like the design, you know, no. I mean, there was no reason to bring you guys six designs and try to hash out. I mean, we spent two hours and that was just three of us. So to bring six designs to council, um, didn't, you know, obviously did not make sense. So it was, um, I, I will say this, it was the most economical plan is the one that we were looking at. Um, not because it was the most economical plan, and I'm just gonna say this, Eric and I, that was the first one that we looked at that made the most sense. Um, it wasn't until we got further along to find out that it was more than likely the most economical design. Um, but there were just some that there, they did not bring a bad design, I will say that. Um, but there were some that were just, I think one, and I'll, and I'm gonna say this. I think once they kinda told us that it was the most economical, I think the other ones really did go out the door. Um, because it's, you know, it is still about, you know, the cost. It is still about what, you know, at, at the end of the day, if I bring you guys something that we're never gonna do and we spend the next three months talking about something that we're never gonna do or we're gonna have, it's just gonna be, what's the point? I mean, we've, we've been there, we've done that, um, so at this point, we're looking at the most.
Functional and economic.
Yeah, I mean, it, it was, it was, again, Eric and I, we were the first ones there, cause Chief actually had gotten called out and he came back in. And, you know, he had some questions about, you know, where things were, but they're, they are making some tweaks to the one that they gave us. Um, but we didn't have elevation designs, we didn't have any of that stuff. It was nearly floor plan, the gist of it, the, you know, answering questions, would we have to have trailers? Would we have to do this? Would we have to do that? We got all of those answers, um, and we feel that this is the one that functions the best for us, the one that is the best price for us. We don't know price, but you know, we basically went, this is definitely gonna cost you more because of this. This is gonna cost you more because of this. We don't, so don't ask, and if that's the next question, please don't ask that. We don't know, um, but we know that a new build was, you know, and, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but he thought a new build was gonna be obviously two million plus.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so it was, you know, so we just kinda nicked, you know, we were just, i- i- at this point, this was the best thing. Um, it did have a very large community room. Um, and I think that, and it's not just the current community room size. So I, it was, I don't wanna go into crazy detail in case it switches up a little bit. Um, and I, you know, I just, I don't wanna, so yes, I mean, you guys are going to get it, it is, is gonna come to council. Obviously, I can't do anything without your guys, without money. Um, and then we will be working with Kim quite a bit when it comes to, um, financing and all of that kinda stuff, so Kim is gonna be helping, she is fully aware that she's gonna be helping and all of that. Um, so we'll, we'll get into all of that once we get there, but we are excited to get the designs. Two to three weeks is probably what we're looking at. Um, it'll have elevations, it'll have, you know, the front, the back, the sides. Um, and for the record, the stairs will not be affected, my sidewalk will likely not be affected, or my, um.
I guess the only other question I, I listened intently enough that it is now answered, because I was wondering who the we was and it sounds like it's you, Eric and Chief, are the ones doing these meetings.
Um, Leah would typically be there, but she was out ill. Um, so yes, it would be basically all of the administration. Um, Becky, as you guys know, um, is no longer with us. So she would have been involved, absolutely. Um, but yes, I mean, anybody that is, you know, the only person that's really not involved that works is Brian only because it doesn't really include the maintenance at this point. Um, but he would have been involved if there would have been a garage or something like that. But at this point, it's every single person, um, that is going to be in the building ninety percent of the time.
Awesome, that makes perfect sense to me then. Groovy, all right, so we'll go back to any other, uh, anything else, renew or old? Going twice, third time, all right? And the only other thing I have here is, uh, Tony, I, those 3D printers are new, what, what'd you get? Those look like great toys.
Done, I don't know.
Uh, well, if he ever wants to talk 3D printing, I, I love that business, so.
Workless crap with.
They are good for the worthless crap. Yeah, you can, in fact, print a gun, it'll only fire once and probably take your hand with it, but it'll, it'll work. All right, well, with that, I will adjourn this meeting, everybody have a wonderful day, we will see you on Monday.